No, have you seen what?
Saying the last.
Please.
Yeah.
I have not seen anything over the last week.
There has been a foundation restoration.
Did you really use it?
On both sides of.
Okay. It's six P M on Tuesday, October the twenty second, twenty twenty four. We want to welcome everyone to our South Weaver. City Council meeting this evening. Uh, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance from Councilwoman Petty and then I'll offer a prayer.
Please stand and repeat the pledge.
I. By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father is great with this council meeting this evening. I'm thankful for this opportunity. We have to meet here in our city hall and to be able to discuss. Affairs and concerns of our city. We're thankful for our city and for all of our citizens and for those that. That make this such a great place to live. We pray as we contemplate the decisions this night that we will be guided by. They that we will make the proper decisions and choices. That will best benefit our city. We're thankful for. Our first responders and those serving in the military and pray that they will bless them and help them in their. Jobs that keep them safe. That they might be able to keep us safe. Thank you. For this opportunity and pray for thy blessings upon us and upon our city in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, we'll begin this uh this evening with our. Public comments. If anyone has any. Comments. Uh, we do not have a public hearing. Uh, on any of our items this evening, so this is the time that you would want to come forth. And make any comments that you have. We would ask that you be respectful. And uh. Civil and everything that you discuss and say. We would ask that you take three minutes or less for your remarks. Uh, please no remarks from the audience. State your name and your city. And direct your comments. To the entire council. So with that, we'll open it up for public hearing. Lovely comments, anybody?
Hi. Uh, Ashley went South Weber City. One twenty nine Harper Way. Earlier today, I sent an email to the Council Planning Commission and Dave Larson. I'm sure some of you had a chance to read it and some of you didn't. Uh, sorry, I work all time and have a life, so I've been trying to put something together, but it's been. A little rush. I'm gonna read just a portion of it and then kinda. Give the highlights. I'm writing regarding the conditional use permit that has been approved by the Planning Commission and now appears to be on the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. I'm frustrated yet again to have to send an email to the city regarding this property. The landowners adjacent to this property have brought up quite a few concerns regarding the property. I was made aware last minute that the Planning Commission was reviewing the conditional use permit for the land adjacent to our property. On October tenth, I myself was able to arrive late and hear the tail end of the discussion and subsequent denial and then approval of the permit. Only from that meeting when someone mentioned, someone present mentioned it being on the October twenty second city council meeting. Did I know to watch for it on the agenda tonight? Myself and the other residents located adjacent to this property have not been given any written notice. Of the conditional use application that is clearly stated on the application. I snipped a piece of it. Conditional use information. The city will send written notice of the application to the residents and or property owners within three hundred feet of the Apkins property. As of today, I've talked to. Uh, I think eleven. Properties that are within three hundred feet and no one has been given written notice. We have various concerns regarding the property. I do see the developer has addressed some on the agenda for tonight. But still nothing concerning the slope of the land mentioned in phase two. I'm not gonna go deep into it cuz I think Sarah will, but. We do appreciate the Planning Commission upholding the buffer yard. Uh, the frustration at this point would be there are trees currently there and I don't see why we would. Tear down fifty foot trees to put in twenty five foot trees. When there's already a really good buffer yard completely around um. Where they're proposing a buffer yard. Um, at the end of the planning commission meeting, we were able to speak to a city council member. Member who mentioned coming out to the property, walking it with us so we could express our concerns on the slope. And bring our concerns firsthand. That was not able to happen. I'm not blaming that on him. It's in a rushed process. Um, but we would like that to happen. Uh. We feel like due diligence would be having the council or at least some of the members. Come out, walk the property, see the slope that we're concerned concerned about. I did notice um around ten A M today, there was an addendum added to the agenda for tonight. Indemnifying the developer on anything related to the canal. Um, I understand that General RV didn't. Enclose the canal and create the issue, but the problem that we have to understand is there is an issue. If you go down there. It is quite a bit higher than the property that is right next to it. Um, in the notes. From the city um from the Planning Commission, number seven basically says that they need to submit. Their plans for phase two. I don't see anything in those plans that resolves that slope issue. Um, we're concerned about drainage. We're concerned. We're concerned about the eyesore of thirty foot high. R Vs five starting five foot above um. The existing floor or soil. Um, at this point, we're just requesting the city to really do their due diligence by not approving. Uh, the conditional permit tonight. I feel like if it was in phase one and phase two, I'd be more um apt to say, hey, they've done a really good job with phase one. Added the buffer yard, let's permit it, but they still haven't resolved the slope issue on phase two. So. You guys approving it tonight is basically saying to them, okay, submit something for phase two, but there's no. Resolution of that. Um, that's pretty much it. I also, obviously, I mean. In a perfect and ideal world, I don't believe that the. Written notice was given to any of us, which violates the rules, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley.
Sarah Randall, seventy nine Harper Way. Um, I know the plans say. Possible future phase two. If it is in the future, then why are they seeking approval today? It seems possible that General RV and other city officials know the portion of the property is impacting residing residents. As well as the future Nielsen home residents who at this time don't have a say in what in General RV does with the property. In reality, also, as a profitable business, are they really going to make improvements on the other four plus acres? And leave this less than an acre vacant for something in the future? Cost wise, that does not add up to me. General RV is going to spend money for phase one and leave a smaller portion to pay for higher price prices for improvements in the future. Also, if RVs are already on the lot of phase one, then where would they move them to and be able to bring the in the equipment and materials needed for the improvement of phase two? If they have spots for storing during that time, why can't those spots be used all the time? Maybe I'm just logically thinking, but that seems like bad management, or do they recognize all the details but want them to be ignored? In the hopes that it passes and they don't have to deal with more residents from Nielsen homes fighting them in the future because they have already gotten it approved. Please consider that the city opted not to put in a right turn lane on South Weaver Drive to accommodate their trucks and the RVs coming into the public works facility. Although UDOT did not require it. You all drive South Weaver Drive with traffic, bicyclists and winding roads. Leaving the option as unavailable for RVs to use Kingston sounds like something that will happen if South Weaver Drive gets crowded in any way. Let's keep those who walk on the road safe, especially the schoolchildren walking to and from the bus. And use the suggestions by the staff to avoid sixty six fifty and Old Maple Road. But put it in, make sure it's put in writing and enforced. Also with pavement, I would think General RV would want to plow their lot to make it easier for them to get RVs in and out of the lot in the winter. So why not pave with asphalt? Save the surrounding residents with lung problems and allergies from the impact of breathing breathing and dust kicked up by each move in and move out. Um, it should be accepted as if it was the desire of the General RV to make the dis. It should not be accepted as if it is the desire of General RV to make the decision on paving or not. Also, eight foot walls and trees, why not? The Riverdale Bench Bench Company has the right. To clean the canal and the surrounding easements at any time. Taking away the existing buffer, General RV should be required to follow the existing city code and not have it waived. I would ask that you can take this, take the concerns of the current residents in the Heather Cove subdivision. And deny the approval of the conditional use permit submitted by General RV. As the concerns all go against the criteria stated in S W C C ten dash seven dash two. With criteria for approval of conditional use permits ten dash seven dash four standards. Compatibility with or impact to neighboring properties, safety of persons and properties, health and sanitation. Environment, traffic, circulation and parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
My name's Dave Randall. I live at seventy nine Harper Way in South Weaver. These two ladies. Uh, took my, all of my words, right? Um, but I wanna say this, right? Obviously, we don't, we don't want this. Inventory parking lot in the middle of our neighborhood. And uh unfortunately, we don't own the land. So I don't know that we get that say, we don't get that say. But we would like the code to be followed. And um, we had this conversation with the the Planning Commission and uh. They listed. Seven different items that they they recommended with this and. I would ask if those be followed, all of them. The the eight foot walls, the. Buffer um on every boarding, bordering property, not just. The ones that don't have trees there already. Let's follow the code. My other um concern is, and it stated is uh. The way that it's written right now, General RV gets to decide when South Weaver isn't accessible. And um. We have kids that walk that road. It's already busy enough with the. The twenty to thirty end dumps and side dumps that are coming down there and if we have to add RVs, it gets dangerous. Um. Then the final thing is, is there's a, there is an elevation bust, or maybe there's not. Maybe, maybe it's known. That that's gonna be five and a half feet taller than my property. And uh, that's not mitigating the two different zones, right? It's just allowing them to do what they want. And me having to deal with the aftermath. I want, I want it to be vetted a little bit more. Let's separate. The the phase one and phase two. Um. I was, was said before, if it's in the future, let's approve it in the future. We don't need to approve it right now. I um. I appreciate. The the city um. Looking into this. Uh, please, if you wanna come out and look at it, I'd be happy to show you it. I've checked it with. And and my manner was kinda discarded before cuz I used the two by four with a level and a tape measure to figure out what the height was. I realized that that's not. So I got a rover. I got a tremble rover. I borrowed one and shot it using V R S. And I was without, I was off four tenths. But it's, it's five and a half feet. So let's. Let's separate those two. Let's follow the code. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Leanne Maycock, and I live in one eighty Harper Way, and I've lived in South Weaver for twenty five years. Prior to that, I lived in Uenta, so I know this area pretty well. Um, this is my first meeting because I don't do these. But um, as I was away out of town, I had a notice put on my doorstep that I didn't understand. So I'm behind knowing what. The city has allowed to happen to my, my neighborhood, my home, our homes. I felt South Weaver would, city would. Take responsibility and protect me as a homeowner, and that's why I chose moving here. I moved to a rural area. And now I drive down into South Weaver and I see an ugly brown cement building. I go into my neighborhood and I see an ugly huge metal building. That looks like an airline airplane hangar. Now you're putting a parking lot. As I come out my driveway. And you're proposing. To put storefront. In my neighborhood. I don't feel like. My best interest is being served nor none of my neighbors' best interests, and I listened to the three hour last meeting. And was very upset that I had neighbors that tried to purchase their land to protect themselves, and that should have been done. Without a question from the city to allow them to purchase their land. I don't want a parking lot. I encouraged my family, my kids, my sister to live in South Weaver. And now I'm very disappointed that I'm not protected by you guys. Uh, and I've missed all of the other ones because I did not feel like. I would matter. My thoughts would matter, and I still don't feel like it. But this last few days, I. Feel like I need to vet this because I planned on living in South Weaver till I died. I just retired, and now that's a question to me if I want to try to find someplace. That's gonna honor me and my request and what my plans were for my life and the residents in my neighborhood. Thank you. Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Our next item is action item. We need to approve the consent agenda for. The minutes of September the twenty fourth. Any changes, directions to these minutes? Not all look for a motion.
Hey, I I suggest there be one change that staff has provided in the minutes under. Action item number six, there's a statement to clarify um. To distinguish between Councilmember Dills and Councilmember Windsor uh question to receive the sales tax for vehicles. Uh, that's been written. I think it's been put on our, our desk here as a modification to their minutes. So if that is acceptable, I move to approve the uh meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with one change and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Next item, conditional use permit twenty four dash zero three, general RV. Inventory lot. I've asked Lance if he would kind of give us a. A review on this and a couple of changes that I think have come in. So Lance, would you like to take? Few minutes?
Sure, just to, just to. Just, just a quick cover of it, what's gone on. I mean, obviously, we have the seven conditions of approval. Uh, that are required by the planning commission. We voted three one to recommend approval. Um, the applicant has made several uh changes to their drawings and plans to try and address these. Has also submitted um cross section evaluations. Uh, with the showing the changes from the ground level of the adjacent homes up through the site. I'll let them present those changes and and that information. I. Believe that's what they've done. Um, I do want to just really quickly touch on the fact of the notice. The application in the, on the current, on the website does have the requirement for the letters. To go out the three hundred foot radius. However, that's. The application forms out in January of this year that code was removed and changed. Um, for public meetings, so we do not have to and. The city and the state have both modified their codes to show that. No uh letters are required to be sent out. To the adjacent neighbors of them three hundred feet. So I'm sorry, the application updated online, but the code that the city and the state is the prevailing. Well, that's why those letters were not sent out. Any questions on on the site or the changes? I'm happy to address, um, but I think the applicant can speak to that better.
Hey. Thank you, Lance. With that, council, you have any? Discussions? Items that you, we need to go over?
Just a quick, quick clarification. When you said the the seven recommendations by the planning commission, were all seven of those on the new drawings?
I don't think so. I don't think they're reflected all entirely. I mean, um. The, I believe it's still showing the six foot wall, base air ball on the civil plan. The site is not shown to be paved. Um, the landscaping changes and and the applicant, I think can speak to this in more detail, but the landscaping buffering changes. It now reflects that the. There's the north property line that in the canal area, and then there's six foot of the nationary wall. That landscaping area was shown to be removed and our current plans show that they're gonna leave the natural vegetation. For the time being. I mean, that's what it's showing is that it's just, they're gonna leave the natural vegetation rather than.
Funny, so just clarify that on, if you would, they are leaving the vegetation. Right. With a period at the end of that, not. Until later. It's, they're leaving that.
They're leaving it, yes.
Follow up on that, the entire north side of their property line?
Yes.
North side.
You, you can come up.
North side of the canal?
Come on up.
Hi, Kevin Shoncheck with South Weaver LLC. The um. The natural buffer, we we prefer to leave for a number of reasons. Number one, it it, I think it creates a a better net, a a better buffer for the residents, but uh, number two. You've got the north property line and then you've got a natural canal, then you'll have our wall. Well, between the wall and the canal, you'll have a sixteen foot buffer that the. That the uh canal company actually needs for access to clean out the the drain. Okay, so we can't, it's actually uh called a prescriptive easement. We can't put anything in that area if we wanted to. So from time to time, the uh, the the uh, the canal company may have to go in and do some, some cleaning so long as. Um, you know, the the drain is kept clean, it should be okay, but um, you know, I I don't live here, so I don't know how often. The canal company is out there doing maintenance work, but um, so our thought is. You've got the neighbors fence, you've got natural um trees and and shrubs. Brush, what whatever you wanna call it, and you've got a canal, and then you've got more trees, and then you would have sixteen feet. Our wall and then our, our development. So you'd have much better protection in my, my opinion that way than putting up a wall and putting. Some bushes behind the wall cuz I can't put them on the other side.
So again, I'm a little bit slow tonight. Um, it's going to, from the back fence of their yard.
Right.
There's a little bit of room gonna be left, and then you've got the canal itself.
Correct.
And then from the canal. Inward, so southeastward. Um, all of that's an easement for the canal company. It's not gonna be touched, it's not gonna be cleared, it's not gonna be done anything by you guys, right?
So we'll have to do some grading so that the site. Slops properly and then, and then we have the wall, so and then whatever, whatever we touch would grow back nat- natural, so we.
So, uh, I'm, I'm kinda confused then. So in that easement.
Yes.
You guys are going to still take care of the vegetation. You're gonna still love all the trees and stuff like that. Or this is after the sixteen?
We'll we'll only do what we have to do to get the grades right on our on our sites. We have drink proper.
So that's on the other side of the sixteen feet.
That's right.
Where your wall is then going to go. So as of right.
No, I no, I no, on the north side of it as well. So we'll have to do some grading naturally because we we've got to put uh. I don't know, uh twenty one inches of stone in or or something like that to get get the right uh uh section for the RVs, but um. So not a lot, but not a little. So you gotta do some grading off of that.
But that would be um significantly more of a buffer yard requirement than what the city code is.
That's right. Correct. Yeah, and if you if you walk the site now. I was uh, I was up, I didn't have a chance to get there today, but I was out there two weeks ago before the planning commission meeting and it was pretty, it's it's grown up pretty well. Um, I would say better than putting in brand new trees. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, no, no. Trouble hearing is closed.
Oh, she's.
So the canal company, right now, the easement for the canal is a prescriptive easement. There's no written agreement in place. However, one of the canal company's requirements is that an agreement has to be put in place. That should outline what the maintenance obligations are and what the canal company will be doing, what general RV would be doing.
So basically, we give them access and they would do the maintenance. Now, if. One of the conditions uh uh that the canal company gave to us. For the approval of of this development, which which they've approved. Uh, doing it this way was that if we did, if and when we do phase two, we would pipe the canal. Now, if we pipe the canal, then we will relocate the fence or the wall and then we would uh. Have to put in some kind of additional buffer. So we gotta, I was talking to Lance about that. I we'll have to design, come up with a design that works there. Um, for everybody, but one of the conditions of planning commission is that we come back in front of uh planning and and city council for phase two. Um, that was not our our hope was to do everything in one fell swoop, but. Uh, I can I can understand with the uh with the canal possibly being piped and relocated. Uh, at some point in the future, hopefully sooner rather than later. That means we're doing better, so we need more space.
Lance, do we have anything in code that um protects or regulates how that is going to be done?
What is.
Um, so if if they do have to come through and they decide to pipe the canal and um. General RV is willing to to do that as part of the phase two, is that listed in code of of requirements they have to meet or?
Well, they'd have to come back in for a second, conditional use to expand for that area.
Okay.
And then the site plan approval as well for those changes.
Okay, so. If they did. Make that big of a change, they still have to come back to the city. They still have to get a approval for a SEUP and then also for the site plan of how that's gonna work.
Condition of approval.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, just trying to clarify something.
No problem. Did you want me to go through these? Conditions?
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes, but can you just please, uh, we need to know your attorney's name for the record.
Sure.
Great. My name is Zanna DeGore. I'm with Curt McConkey.
Thank you.
Counselor, uh, can we, before we go through those lists, I still like to go back and like to have staff explain how did we get? The condition of a four foot bust degrade between what they're calling phase two and the neighboring property? Did that condition get developed with the closure of the canal? Has that four foot bust or five foot bust in elevation always been there? I'm a little, I'm a little concerned as to how that developed in time. And why it's being put on the things too, and I could, I'd use a background to that.
Alright, Brandon will address that, but it is related to the piping of the canal.
Um. So back with the approval of the Riverwood subdivision. They had proposed to. Uh, relocate and pipe the canal. And. In order for them to. Put that piped. Canal section into Harper Way. They had to cross from where the canal is to where Harper Way is. And at the time. And this was before the city had talked about selling a portion of the property. They um, the city uh allowed, approved. Them to cross the city's property. For a portion of that canal relocation. And so that work was done as part of just earlier this summer, maybe, I don't know, month and a half ago. Uh, that that work was done, but it was part of the Nielsen Home Developments, which is Riverwood Subdivision. The elevation issue. Is. Uh. Due to the fact that you now have a pipe instead of an open canal. The the flow line or the bottom elevation of that canal is roughly still the same, but now you've enclosed it and you've had to. Uh. Uh, you know, put material over the top of the pipe, so the pipe's not just. Sitting there um. You know, not covered. So that's what you have out there right now.
Cover over the pipe was then extended out to the boundaries?
No, right now it just is is just uh ramped up and over the the pipe.
Sim- similar to what's behind Freedom Landing.
But what I'm trying to understand is, I understand what you talked about the pipe being closed and the grade being above the pipe and you have to have the cover. But that pipe's not right on the boundary line, but I'm hearing the public say his fence line, there's a five foot grade bust.
Yeah, let me explain that. So it's right at the corner.
Okay, so a portion of it.
Yes, right at the corner is where the the canal goes from being open to enclosed.
And the city allowed that adverse condition to occur.
Yes, the city, the city approved it at the time. Um, I believe the thinking at the time was. That the city owned the property and if the developer was willing to pay to pipe the canal, which we knew. You know, may have to be on our dime at some point in time in the future. That that would be a benefit to the city to go ahead and allow them to, you know, on their dime, pay for that. But then, you know, now things are a little different.
So for phase two to happen, to be able to put truck traffic, vehicle traffic over that pipe, it needs to maintain at least a three to four foot cover. Protect that pipe. And that's why the grade remains there. So if the current. South Weaver LLC wants to use that, the whole area has to come up to match that grade to be used, to be useful.
To to some degree, yes. Exactly how much cover? That would be up to the canal company and whatever the manufacturer is willing to accept on the on the concrete reinforced concrete.
That'll be phase two in that area is unusable because it's gonna create a deterior- a a negative impact to the public. Because of what the city allowed to close that pipe in that area. I can't see it being a parking lot and having a five foot or four foot great difference at that property line. That's a problem. That's an engineering problem.
Um. That that is, that's something that you could still, you know, go. See for yourself, you, the the developers provided some cross sections of. What they're proposing it would look like. Um, so I think that would be helpful to see that.
Yeah, otherwise that pipes can have to be replaced with four smaller pipes to get the flow across and lower the grade down.
If you, yeah, there's cross sections here. If you find those helpful, we can pass. There's just one, so.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated.
So if you look, there's a eleven by seventeen, a larger page at the back. That shows you a section A and a section B. And then there's the actual. Cross sections of A and B provided in a blow blown up. Profile view.
But phase two is not on the agenda tonight.
Technically, yes, but as a condition of the PC. We're supposed to come back.
But we don't have any concrete, sorry, on phase two. Well, in the packet, there's a concept of how the parking would lay out. Um, and the landscaping, some part of the property lines.
Yeah, I think all the conditions of the uh that are required for buffering and. And all those elements are included in the original packet. So. Um, yeah, but certainly we have to do some papering. We'd have a crown where the the pipe is and we have to paper all of that. We would want to raise the entire grade. Uh, obviously, it wouldn't do uh. Do the uh, the residents any good and it'll cost us a lot of money.
Um. While everybody's looking at that, I do have a couple of questions. Um. Uh, just so all of y'all know, I was the councilman that uh talked with them afterwards, uh Ashley and Sarah. Um, and I did go down there. I apologize. I didn't give you guys a call because I just went down on my own. Um, took um Mr. Evans and. Uh, uh, Dave, Mr. Larson. Um. And uh, really. We drove in from the other side, so I could see exactly where you were talking about. I've got some pictures over here that I was just passing to the the rest of council. Um. And it it is pretty apparent to to see, here's where the pipe is and then it cuts down. I mean, even the uh. Hmm. So if. Y'all wanna take a look, I mean, that's exactly the part that they're talking about. Um, it it does just cut right down. Um. It doesn't, uh, some of the concerns of, uh, you know, if if they get too much water there, it's gonna run down or any of those kind of things. I don't. I don't see that happening on it, but at the same time, I see where having a. Um, and I'm I'm assuming the five foot you're taking is off of the the cement. Um. Okay, so I've got that on there. Um. And I'm not sure necessarily that the top of the combo box is actually going to be the top of everything, but it from what I'm hearing with the gravel and everything, it's gonna. It could be very close to that. Um. I am kind of disappointed that the piping that we used really does make that dome and make it so much higher over there. Um, I can understand why the grade the rest of the way is literally going to be maybe, you know, a foot every, you know, fifty feet. Or whenever we talked about in the PC meeting. Um. Because you're already taking that that big five foot jump going over there. Um. Uh, unfortunately, other than what um. Councilman Windsor just talked about, uh, I didn't know of any other way to fix that. Um. So in my mind, it was, that's all we've got is just the one big pipe and it's over the canal. The canal has been there forever. It's not something that you guys. Uh, chose to put the canal there, although that we did cut through it. So seeing that. Incline so strong right there. Um. Yeah, I I am kind of disappointed that we went with a a very large. Pipe instead of maybe four others or something else that could go through there. That definitely would have made it a lot better. Um. Randall, you are the, sorry, Mr. Randall. Um, you are on the corner house, correct? So, okay, so you're the corner house. There's. Basically an end to the road on that side. So I saw you and that's the picture that I'm showing everybody is the one right there that goes up from it. Now, I don't see that the rest of the way, though. Um. Is the intention then that when the canal company comes in, if they decide to cover it? The entire line then will have that five feet increase?
I I don't, I don't think so. I think it's it's the very worst in the corner. But as you head to the north, um, the the pipe also heads farther to the west. And so the ability to slope that off and make it not as bad is easier. But um, I mean, if we're addressing phase two at a later time, then then those would be things that. We could talk more about and. Maybe a address if there's other ideas of how to minimize that.
Yeah. Now, at that, at that box, um, I think Dave, you were the one that said this, that that's where the canal. Direction was changed so that it could go up to to Kingston. Now. Is there a reason why then the rest going away from that box is up that high? The, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, from the box in the corner.
Uh huh.
Um, so that's where it diverts what used to be the open canal that went essentially um to the west. And then it diverted kind of northwest and was piped. And it gets lower over time to then get underneath the road.
Okay, so looking at the where we were at and the picture that I took of the fence line. It appears that the piping goes directly behind uh the Randall's. Lot. But apparently it doesn't.
It's only to the side of that lot from the back corner.
The west.
The site plan up on the picture?
I think it's the addendum drawing we want.
This is probably not.
Grading plan. Okay. Grading plan phase two, utility plan.
The blue uh is going east to west. That's the existing open canal and then that uh. That dotted, that thicker folded dotted line that goes diagonally uh to the northwest is where the new piped canal is. As you can see, it tails away from the relevance. And then it projects downward. So it really does that southeast corner. Where it connects to the natural canal that. Uh, you'd have that the greatest height difference. And then if you look at this, you know, I think we might have. Proposed a couple of spaces there. If if we can pull up the site line, we'd see exactly how many we could.
There's twenty five, I counted them.
Right, there's like.
In phase two?
In phase two, but necessarily. Once it would be. Objectionable would be whatever would be parked here that would be on that because this would be. Thoroughfare, right? We gotta, we need forty feet to move the units. We're not gonna be parking in the circus where where most of the pipe will be. Is it, uh, can we go to the site plan?
Yeah.
See how that looks.
Other direction.
That's a grading plan.
So.
The packets are big, so it slows everything down.
One more.
One more up?
Sure. One more down, excuse me.
Yeah.
There you go. That's the one.
So, yeah, so it's, so these would be spaces. Probably an issue right here. We'd have to come up with some kind of plan for. I don't think the other ones, I don't think any of the, the the balance that I should be concerned.
The two concerns I'm having, counsel, is the topography, the grading plan in that corner and site runoff going on to the neighbor's property. I think it's the responsibility of the developer of this property to maintain any water that hits his property, stay on his property, and he needs to figure that out. The second thing is I don't. Anything given to the phase two screening of those. Parking lots in that quarter. To aid in that uh, that buffer.
It does say one spot fence. It does have fencing noted on there, potential future.
The eight foot fencing is is recommended.
Yes, and it doesn't say that on this specific one. It says six foot.
I don't know if that's enough. I'm more concerned about the drainage onto that uh existing neighbor's property. That shouldn't happen. We shouldn't allow anything to make that, to allow that to happen.
For sure. And when we go to develop that, all of our engineered plans would ensure that nothing runs off to the to the neighbors, but we're right now, it's just. As is natural. So I assume there's been no issues. I mean, nothing's changed except for the the trees coming out, I believe.
I'm not familiar with the area. I'm just going with what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing on the drawings. The section, the cross section you provided, um, staff. Uh, isn't at the corner and it should, it's, it still shows about a one foot. Immediate grade change from the existing ground to the developed ground. Uh, so. It's not four foot, but it's still a foot. But that's not at the corner. That section's cut. So a distance north of that.
That's what I wanted to point out. That's why I wanted to point out, the corner is the very worst.
And as part of the phase two resumet, we'll address that. We're not addressing that now because it's, I don't think it's on the table.
I'm sorry. I think we can, we can properly address that when the time comes, when we, when we resumet for phase two in the future.
Help to delineate what's phase two in regards to that corner. I thought that corner was part of phase one.
So you've got, you've got the natural screen in here along the canal.
Is that eternal turn?
To this point. And then you have the eight foot wall as well, which we're, we're agreeable to going from the six foot to the eight foot.
That the red line is big that I'm making, you know, I could see what you're pointing out.
Going where the.
Well, this, we're, we're doing a wall here.
That is the red line.
This is red line here. Okay. And then this is, this is fence over here.
I'm sorry, getting with these glasses, I can't see the small print on the drawing. That's my issue. Oh, no, you're fine.
I got you.
I need the thirty-two by.
Okay, so back to where the canal is, is that the area that is still being requested that the buffer be shortened? Not anymore?
It's not being shortened, no.
Okay, so the.
We're not parking RVs in that.
Yeah, I saw that one. They've got the twenty foot going all around that. So we're still, we still have the buffer going all the way around, separating between residential and this commercial.
So you'll have the north property line of general RV, the canal, then sixteen feet, and then a eight foot wall. Then the site of the storage of the RVs that are out home. The tallest.
Thirteen-six.
Well, they is the, is the tallest.
So that's, you would have south property line of the neighbor would look across the canal, across the wall and potentially to a thirteen foot tall, not quite RV. Going to the south. The issue to the ease would be you'd have the wall and then a significant grade change, and then they'd sit up a little higher.
If, if I could just add to that, though, I would say that just, I think to fully answer your question on the far east side of the property, there will still be the twenty foot. They're, they're proposing to put the eight foot wall on property line, then the twenty foot buffer yard. And on the far west side, along, this is for, along the phase one line, so not all the way for phase two. But on the far west side, they would also have an eight foot wall and twenty foot buffer yard. So there would not be anything on the south between the city public works and, and this lot. Does that answer your question?
Yes, does. One of the, one of the questions that I kept on hearing that night and was a concern for a lot of the stu-, or students, a lot of the citizens was that general RV would be able to make the decision of, once an emergency, when they can go out in and out between South Weaver Drive or going out through Kingston. Is, is that a real thing or? I, I assume, because the only entrance in and out on Kingston is the part that's going to be connected to the city property. So they don't actually have an outlet from the parking area onto Kingston. They would literally have to go through the public works building, go through the, the site on our end to be able to go out that, that fence. They don't have access. Is that right?
No, they do. They do. They, you're right. They have to exit that way, but they do have an easement, an access easement across the city's property.
Well, we'd have to go through a gate and then on to the city's property, and then through their gate.
There's two gates that they would have to go through from their lot to get to Kingston.
Okay, so Jamie, as an easement like that, who decides what the definition of emergency or need is on something like that? Is that something that, since we're on that, we can still judge and say, no. Just because there's, you know, a soccer game going on, doesn't mean you come this way. There's a lot of concern about taking it through the neighborhoods. So we just want to know the, the legal aspect of that.
We'd have to look at the text of the easement. Right now, where it's prescribed, if you wouldn't have anything to look to when that's negotiated and agreed to among the parties, then you could look to that document. I, I don't. On the, on our current plat language or the existing.
It just is recorded as an access easement on the plan.
Let me look at the, at what the easement itself says and then.
If I can, I mean, I don't. Easement, but with the conditional use permit, it could clarify a condition if that's a concern. But access is only to South Weaver Drive in the south, except for, you know, whatever emergency.
Agreed upon by the city or something. So it would take an agreement, it wouldn't.
They do have a two gates on the south that are beyond going into the city. But, you know, the conditional use permit, I believe, would vehicles control when they can use those if you wanted to. I, I, the intent is.
Yeah, we're, so we've got the prime, the, the gate we'll use is a, is a thirty foot opening. That's what we need. So I think the other one's ten or fifteen, or I don't even, I haven't even looked at it because I.
So this is a sixteen foot wide double swing gate.
Okay, yeah. So that's for the emergency, right? So emergency vehicles, first responders and when I have, could have access potentially. But yeah, we, there's, we don't need it. But it's not, we haven't set it up for an electric sliding gate, which is what we have on the other side. It's not in our operations plans at all. There's no reason for it.
Cause that, that.
There is a reason for it. It's required by fire code.
So you're saying you're vacating, but no, I'm just.
But, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know who over here spoke. On the plat that is currently recorded, it's not shown as emergency access only. So there is an existing easement, right? We're still willing to work with the city, but again, we just want to make sure we can follow the fire code.
Yeah. And I, I, I think what you were saying Lance was that we could probably handle that so that it's kind of a mutual agreement thing, that it's, if, if there was an emergency or something, they would still have to, to go through and talk to the somebody, whether that's our city manager or what, I don't, I don't know how that would be official, but put that in so that, because I know, I, I don't think you guys really have a plan to go out that way. It doesn't make sense to start, you know, taking class A's down that road and everything. But I do know that the citizens are concerned.
Sure.
And I would rather put something into writing that kind of mitigates that concern. Yes, Jamie?
So looking at the, the plat, the utility and access easement doesn't have a restriction on it. So it's not limited as to time or notice or anything like that. I think anytime the owner of lot three wanted to use the access easement, it could. You could limit it by agreement, you know, either through the CUP or through a plat revision, but right now it's not limited.
So we've talked about on the wall.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
Brandon, can you address the drainage concerns maybe more directly? After looking at everything yourself, do you feel like there is a significant risk? From your perspective, are we overlooking something?
With the, the canal pipe going in, it does, it is, it does create a ridge and so. Stormwater to the north.
So, so the risk is that their properties could potentially flood when it didn't, when it didn't before, or is that?
I mean, they, they, could they get some additional rainwater onto their yard? Yes, they probably could. I don't know that I would say that there's a significant risk for major flooding. The, the, the property we're talking about is not very big. But to eliminate any kind of risk, if you will, to that, there is a storm rain pipe in the road. And, you know, when we're looking at phase two, if it, if it helps to eliminate that concern, like they, they could connect to that storm drain and, and just make sure the grade goes to that box on their property.
But condition can be issued that all drainage is self-contained as part of phase one and phase two.
Yes, I, I, I don't think it hurts to put that condition on. But we, we don't allow for development to, to happen knowing that it's going to drain onto adjacent properties without them addressing it. So that would still be addressed, but, but, you know, since it's been brought up as a specific concern, it certainly doesn't hurt to say something on the CUP. Thank you, Brandon.
Another one of the concerns that I heard at both meetings now is the, this was going to be only storage. I don't think that's really a thing for the developer. The zone that we're dealing in, it is a commercial zone, correct? So there could be sales there. Is that something we could also look at in the CPU? Cause I, I'm, I'm assuming that you're still not looking at doing any sales directly from that lot.
That's correct.
Is, is that something then that we could put in the CUP? Okay. And then I guess the, the other one is, is there any time restrictions? So would this be coming in or out? I would assume this would only be during business hours of the general RV proper, the, the larger building.
Correct.
Okay, so because we're not, you're not going to have anybody stationed over there twenty-four seven in case a truck drops.
We won't have any employees on site unless they're coming to pick up a unit and bring it over to the main site. It would be very temporary, very low impact.
And then the last one, in, in the PC meeting, I was kind of confused. I did not hear correctly. Is the ground itself going to be gravel? Is it going to be what they call chit, I think? Is it going to be road base? When is the plan currently for it?
It's mixture of stone and road base.
So it would be so base and then six inches of base or five inches of base course and then one inches of washed gravel material. That would be washed, there's no dust, that's the idea, washed gravel. That was a recommendation that we were following something like that.
Brandon, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I, I was just gonna say, like, what you'll see is the, is the one, one inch washed crushed gravel. So it's a rock, a gravel, not, not a road base that you won't see.
Okay, so when they do pull in and out, there's not going to be the concern for the dust. If it's all gravel, right?
Should be, no. And we would commit to treating it as we need to in the main thoroughfares. Most of it's going to be parking, then you'll have the, so you wouldn't have any issue in the parked areas. And then you'd have a handful of units being yanked every day. And there's, there's, I don't think there's going to be enough activity to really be any trouble. But yeah, we would commit to, to treating it as we needed to.
There, there is a maintenance agreement that's part of this that addresses that, that they would address the dust concerns. And either, you know, washing down the rock again or, or treating it with something that keeps the dust down. That'd just be an agreement that we would be enforcing.
Okay, so Dave, I'm assuming then that the process would be the same for enforcement that if the neighbors experienced a lot of kicking up of the dust and a lot of that from these, that they would call either the city, the enforcement online or something like that. And then we'd go through the process of enforcing that by going out, investigating, seeing it, and then working with the landowner, right?
I would prefer they call us first and let us take a shot at fixing it.
Okay. I'm, I'm good. I don't know if I can tell them to.
I, I'd like to better understand. Maybe staff can articulate what the planning commission was saying when they wanted to make the condition to pave entire site versus the one inch washed gravel. It had to do something with the, the rate of retention or the rate of runoff and the ponding with gravel versus the asphalt or what was the, the reasoning behind that recommendation?
I, hopefully I'm not misspeaking, but my understanding was it was simply just the dust control. And that if you're paved, you don't have the dust concerns. Like maybe you would have more so with a, a rock, but I, I believe that was the concern, just, just dust control, not, not any kind of stormwater issue or anything like that.
So we're not concerned with a hundred year storm event and ponding or anything of that nature?
Well, just for the record, the, the detention mason that the city has developed as part of the public works property is sized sufficiently to handle this in a paved condition. So if it's not paved, it's just less.
The rate of, okay.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, that it was for the dust and, and whatnot. Okay, anyone have any other concerns?
That's my main question would be, for Brandon, we, we spoke about making sure that the runoff doesn't negatively impact the adjoining property. How do we mitigate that with this?
Well, you'd, you'd grade it such that it would all go to a low point on their property.
Yeah, in a way, they can do it with land drain.
So it would be covered sufficiently? But we can, how, how would we write that in the CUP? You said we could notate that in here, but.
I mean, if you just simply want to state that, that the applicant needs to keep all stormwater runoff on their own property, that would be sufficient in my mind.
Yeah, we're talking about phase, when we do phase two, right?
Well, don't we need to address it in phase one, though?
Phase one, we're not touching that site. We're not touching that portion of the property.
So if there's a, if there's a concern that, that its current condition, though, is problematic, I guess that, that statement in my mind would still cover. They've got to keep stormwater runoff on their own property. So if it means that they would have to go out and put up, you know, a small temporary little berm to make sure that it doesn't run off on their property, onto the neighbor's property, that they would have to do that.
And that is in our code and it's in the state code. Every, every property has to retain their own water.
Yeah, right. Yes, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the property owners are covered.
Address that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any questions? If not.
My, my, my question is for the council, then we can make a motion, but I won't, somebody else will.
We're fine.
The PC suggested pavement with asphalt. And we, I'm just not sure what everybody's opinion is on that. I don't think one inch thick gravel is enough, especially if you're moving RVs. I mean, one inch could be moved pretty easily.
It's one inch, one inch minus.
Okay, I see.
No, it does say one inch thick.
But it does, yeah, the paper says one inch thick, so.
The cross section does say one inch thick.
Much more than one inch. You've got one inch, five inch, twelve inch or whatever.
But, but the five inches underneath is not washed.
No.
Normal road base that you.
So if you move the one inch section, there's the dirt underneath.
And that's part of the. Yeah, so we would have to dress that up as needed.
Okay, so council, are, what are our thoughts regarding this recommendation from the planning commission?
I don't think it needs to be.
I don't think it needs to be asphalt personally. I think they have it covered fine with their maintenance agreement.
I agree, I don't think you need the asphalt.
Yeah, asphalt creates more water problems.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with that too. I just wanted to see where everybody was, so.
I'm still not sure, just because I don't really know the difference between the two and how they're going to impact. I just put gravel down on side of my driveway, so um, I'm new to this. I do feel better knowing that the city will be enforcing it though. And of course you will.
Want me to sit down?
Sure.
Yes, Kevin.
Okay, one other question, then we have future possible phase two that I'm looking at um. If we do approval of the conditional use permit, just for clarification, if we do that tonight. When they come back to do phase two, any of this that's in here has to be redone with what their actual plan is going to be, including the fencing. Am I misunderstanding that?
I would say that the, if you would write a condition that says that phase one is approved, as shown with these conditions. Phase two will have to require a, an amendment to the conditional use permit addressing that area of the site.
So just so everyone's aware, from the packet that I'm looking at, it shows for phase two um. Six foot tall vinyl slotted chain link fence by the canal, which is part of. Um, that has to be there for canal, right? Canal access. By the gate, okay, um, and then they would do. Six foot tall vinyl slotted, no, hold on. The fence. Oh, and I'm looking at the wrong page.
Angie, I believe they're proposing eight foot masonry.
Yeah, we're talking about it. Now that they've agreed to the eight foot masonry. On the sites that we were talking, that were indicated earlier.
Okay, so. So that would override any of this, cause. It says right here, um, new six foot high chain link fence phase two on Harper Way.
May- maybe could we just get the applicant to?
That's correct, Harper Way.
So the two.
Because it's not between the commercial.
And the correct, if I'm wrong, the two sections he said would be chain link are just there. On Harper Way and between.
And right here.
I don't know, it's not up anymore. And, and there from the corner over, the rest were eight foot masonry.
Right here.
There and over here. And right here.
In front of the.
In front of the canal, correct?
I guess here, here's why I'm just trying to clarify, because at our recent meeting. We did table an item because we just didn't have everything in. Exact order and I want to make sure that we're not going to approve this with a potential future phase two and not have. Everything in order. I hate to approve it and then. Have it not be exactly how it should be. So I, that's my hesitation with this.
For my, my own, I don't know, Wes, maybe you could just address. What is each property line going to have is being proposed? As far as fencing goes, would you mind just restating that, please?
I, I think Kevin agreed that we do an eight foot high um, masonry wall fence along residential lots. The one you were asking about along Harper Way, that little segment at the top of phase two. The city allows for chain link fence to be there and so we're going to leave that little section chain link fence.
But along the canal.
And, and along the.
Would be the eight foot tall masonry fence. Yeah.
All the way.
Along the, the, the natural canal would be eight foot masonry. And then west of that would be chain.
Yeah, so right here would be, so right here would be chain link also, right?
And right here would be eight foot.
Yes, and right there would be eight foot.
Okay. That's my only hesitation is saying, yeah, let's do this and it's not all. In a row.
So are you saying you want the drawings fixed?
I do, I do. I feel like I should be consistent with all of my um. Recommendations and approvals and when we had our last meeting, I wanted it all in a row, so we knew what it was. I recognize that these are recommendations by the PC, so. We could do this um, conditional use permit with these recommendations. I just feel like this is just a little too muddy, that's. My opinion on it. And I'd rather it just be clear, so there's no question from anyone.
I agree with you completely on that. Um, I don't like um. Passing the CUP, the, the conditional use without seeing the wording that we're using for the conditional use. Um, I want to see the actual finished uh, with the changes that we've talked about in here. Um, uh, about being the drainage self-contained, uh, you know, some of the, the um. Uh, specifics on the emergency, the access, all of those kind of things, the easement. Um, there's just a lot of, a lot of detail that I think should be in writing. So that I know when I'm agreeing to, um, and right now I, I agree, it's just a little bit muddy and. Um, so. I would. I would favor um. Either tabling or continuing. Well, that's right, we don't do continue, it's. Postpone or table. Um, I do, eh, I do appreciate the developer working with us on all of these and working with the, the citizens. Um, I just don't think the, the final paperwork is at a stage that um, it makes sense for me to vote, so.
If, if we're gonna do that, can we give staff a list? For Wes and everybody would know, can we, you want to list off what you have written down or whoever? Or what you want added?
Um, I've got on mine, um. Uh, drainage must be self-contained, um, quoting what Brandon said, um. Basically that any water that happens on it stays on it.
And, and that. Could interject just quickly.
Yeah.
The drainage being self-contained, I think is already covered in state law and city code. I don't think that would need to be in the CUP for it to be a requirement.
Okay, thank you. Um. Since it is commercial, something in there specifically saying that this will be used for. This purpose and no other, no retail sells, no any of those kind of things, um. That one was on there. Um, and we. This is, this whole part right here we're doing is separate from the indemnification, right? Okay, I, I didn't want to have to get into those yet on it. Um. Uh, make the change on the fence. Now, the. Sorry. Um. The emergency access and the uh, easement, um, looking on that does not seem like we have any. Protection or whatnot, so we do need something in the CUP that will uh, specifically state um. How that, that, that further goes through.
We just say emergency access only in the CUP.
Yeah.
Do we need to define emergency access? Or is that not required?
Well, there can be a lot of different emergencies, I, I mean, you want to get into that liability side of it.
Planning commission though was, um, who declares an emergency, you know, is it, I gotta get out there now or? Um, is it a actual? Fire department.
If it's a guy just wanting to leave, he's gonna have to go through a lot of trouble to get two keys to two gates.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's probably gonna be an emergency. That'd be my opinion, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I was thinking something very similar, right? And if we left ourselves open to liability, if we didn't define that. In some way.
I don't think so.
We don't have any additional liability if we don't define emergency to be, Jamie.
Okay, I'm saying you do, if you, you have more of a liability if you define it.
Yeah, I don't think.
Might have no retail sales if it's property in emergency access.
Yep. Eight foot masonry wall.
Buffer, we handled everything on it, they, they put everything on there. To, to do something over the turn.
Oh, no asphalt, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not making it two inches. We're just gonna do one, well, we're asking for this. Okay, so we're not making a change on that. Well, that wouldn't be in the cup anyway, so. Um. Buffer, bone height, that's all I've got um, on my list. That's what I've got. Anybody else have any?
Eight foot mason, eight foot masonry wall, gravel, um, site as proposed. No access from, uh, let's see, hold on, emergency access only from Kingston, lot for RV inventory only, no sells. Um.
And that, and that phase one that needs to be brought back to planning commission, or phase two needs to be brought back to planning commission and city council. Yep. Phase two development needs to be brought back for approval. To planning commission and city council. Cause it'll be just treated like a whole new development with the CUP basically, right?
Right. One thing we didn't bring up was the lighting. Um, I know there was some current concerns on it, but we are still planning on the straight down lighting. Um, are we having anything that uh, after a certain hour? That the lighting is dimmed. We've done that in other places where. Uh, people are concerned about the heavy lighting, especially with these neighbors right there, having their entire backyard uh, lit up. Um. Yeah. Yeah, dark sky lighting. So after like ten o'clock, it goes from the hundred percent, even though it's facing down. Then it drops down to say like a fifty or a thirty or something, still gives the light for the area, but now it's not quite as bright as you would need if you were walking through it. Uh, trying to look and read at the same time. Um.
Say look and read.
Look and read. I was gonna say chew gum, I mean, they want to have an unrealistic expectation.
How are, how are you handling lighting? We, that's, that's our code.
Yeah, the dark, the dark sky, dark sky just for clarification, just means that the, the no light can reflect upward. That it doesn't have anything to do with the intensity of.
Of lumens or any of that kind of stuff. It can still glow.
Yes, but yes, our, our code requires dark skies, just means it can escape upward. Which is what is proposed, yes.
Yeah, but the lighting plan doesn't show any. Light going outside, I mean, yeah, the, the older there, you'll see them. The light drops.
Our, our light drops at the wall. Yeah, it's a city. Wall and then you've got thirty to forty feet of bumper at the natural canal and then you've got a fence. So it's, there's a, a pretty good gap.
You have that on the one side, but not all the way around.
That's right, to the south, you've got.
Funny, yeah, you do have your twenty foot buffer, but you have poles up against the fence almost. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just, yeah, that's.
On the east side?
On the east side, yes.
Lance, I thought you did something with the storage sheds down on the bottom of South Weaver Drive in twenty-one hundred.
There, there's a security issue is the problem.
Yeah.
Trying to find that balance between enough light to discourage.
Well, no, you have to have enough. Yeah, and enough light to, of course, use cameras and security, so.
This is not a sale. This is not a sale, inventory only, so this, it's. Per security.
Okay.
So. It's true, if you look at the public action plan, you'll see the light level in the very light.
I've, I've looked at the plan and I have no idea what it means. Just being honest, I look at it and.
You want zero, you want, you want it to be zero or near zero at the property line.
Okay.
And what that means is that you're not going to have light spilling over the property. You, will, will the neighbors still be able to? Be in their backyard or in their homes and look and see light poles with light? Yes. But there won't be any light spilling over into their property.
Okay, so the same basic amount of light that they have now in their backyard, they're gonna have, um, and. It, it should end and be com- uh.
As far as what you see on the ground, yes.
Yeah, especially with the eight foot wall now, so, okay. Yeah, so, nothing, nothing on the light, no changes on that, so just the ones that um, Angie and I mentioned. Sorry. Council member Petty.
That's fine.
So for the council to make sure I have clear notes on what you want in the CUP, can I read back what I have?
Please.
Um, this is, I took what was in the staff proposal and then edited it based on what you discussed. Number one, that an eight foot masonry wall be constructed on the property lines adjacent to residential lots. Number two, that the entire site is paved with one inch thick wash crust, crushed gravel. Number three, that the landscaping will be installed as per city buffer requirements adjacent to lots. Number four, that there will be no access to the inventory lot from Harper Way. Number five, that the Kingston drive access be used only for emergency access, period. Number six, that the lot be used only for inventory of RVs and no sales will be allowed. And number seven, that the applicant will apply for a separate CUP for development of phase two. Am I missing anything?
On the north? Yeah, I think the, the, the north is where the canal was.
That, I just want to be clear.
Okay. Does the, Brandon, read this with me, does the. That the landscaping will be installed as per city buffer requirements, do we need to modify that?
Yeah, you'd say, um, other than along. The north side of the canal. Where. The natural vegetation will remain.
As, as possible stays on that grid. It does the natural canal, that we don't have to utilize for very good. It's just the south side, the, yeah, we wouldn't have to go on the north side of the canal.
Right, you're only, you're, you're only gonna be doing any, uh, any grading or whatever on the south side of the.
That's right.
Okay, so let me. North side will stay native.
I'll read num- number three back, that landscaping will be installed as per city buffer requirements adjacent to lots, comma. Other than along the north side of the canal where the natural vegetation shall remain.
Or say the property, yeah.
Side of the canal.
Now is fine, is it?
Okay.
That's only one location.
Great, I'll leave it at north side of the town.
Before. So we don't have to have this convention. I mean, there's nothing there that's very serious. Okay, so my recommendation would be that we take these items that are listed here. And that we could go ahead and approve this contingent upon these. Items that need to be corrected. And once they're corrected on the. CUP in the site plan and it can move forward. Can we do something like that? Would be my recommendation.
Yes, you can do that, and then you would just authorize the. City staff to finalize that.
City staff to do that.
Um, can, uh, council mayor, I moved to approve the conditional use permit. Um, with all the conditions that have been listed. Um, number twenty-four dash zero three for general RV inventory lot, um. With the additional condition that um. All the conditions be met and uh, also give staff the authority to move forward. Once that has taken place. Does that cover? Jamie, okay.
Okay, we'll go through a little call vote, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna say no, cause I still don't see what I'm voting for.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, four to one. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one canal relocation agreement. Any discussion on this? Okay. Dave, did you want to say anything on this? While we're getting this.
Yeah, while people are pulling up stuff, um this is recognition uh as part of property closing that the city is the one that allowed Nelson Homes as part of the Riverwood subdivision to cross the property and do the canal piping project, that it uh that it was not general RV's uh decision or responsibility. That happened prior to any closing or their acquisition of the property. So that's the, that's the intent of this um indemnification language that it identifies that that happened prior to their acquisition of the property.
Hey, any discussion on this, council?
So for clarification, anything that general RV does, even if it crosses the canal, they're still held accountable for.
What general RV does after they obtain the property is their responsibility and their liability, but as it relates to the canal installation and that project, the city is the entity that allowed Riverwood subdivision, Nelson Homes, to do that project on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Look for a motion in on this.
Move to approve resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one canal relocation agreement.
Second that.
Here we have a motion and a second. We'll call both, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous. Okay, next I have city investment policy amendment. Anyone have any discussion on this? Item?
I think we ask staff to be, the finance and admin committee had rehearsed this, and we ask staff to bring do a brief overview of what's, what this is about.
Thanks, staff.
So, um, basically, we're just recommending that we update the investment policy. It is currently outdated with old uh state codes. So we've removed those and the glossary and appendixes that were listed in there and just updated it to fit for current Utah code um at all times versus putting in code that was for that time and period. Um, so just updating it and we're looking at diversifying the funds. Keeping a portion of it in the PTF, which is our public treas- treasures investment fund. And and then diversifying them to the other portion of it. So that's what we're proposing that we do.
Can you explain the diversification just real quick for me in dumb man's terms?
So we don't have an actual list of what we're gonna do right now. It's just a, in, in the future, we're looking at diversifying it, so we don't have a set of what we're going to be doing now.
You'll, you'll get, you'll get an opportunity. So basically, currently, we are not very diversified in our, what we have in the PTF. It's all in the PTF. Uh, we don't need all of that sitting in the PTF. We're taking and talking about taking it in some very conservative diversification funds, and all of those will be presented as we get presentations presented to the finance, or the finance committee.
Got it.
The idea would be short-term, twelve, six-month, twelve-month, no more than eighteen-month, up to maybe three years, but there'd be some diversification that would be linked to that. This policy is just to set some guidelines for staff as to how to perform. We still think we need to interview and find a what we call a.
Money manager type guy.
Yeah, a manager to help staff with that. Uh, the one thing I was gonna add to this policy that's not currently written for the council's consideration is would this council be open to having the admin finance committee act as a governing body for quarterly reports from staff as to regards to the investments, what investments are going on, the returnals of estimates, and have an annual report to the full council?
I, I think it would be.
I do.
Wise.
Yeah.
So I think if we can add that language to the document, I think that would be helpful.
We'll do.
The only issue, oh, sorry.
It's just something we don't even do now. We don't. None of us have known kind of where any of that is, and it's nice to get a feedback somehow to the council. Of where's, what's there and how much is there?
Yeah. Uh, the only issue that I have is that if the city is investing with uh public funds that whenever we invest into is apolitical as in uh absolutely no, you know, political bias on any side, that this is either whether it's a fund or a money market or whatever you guys want to do. I don't want to suddenly find out that we're supporting something.
Name names, Joel, do it, do it.
Agreed.
I think the policy is written that way that prevents that from happening.
Good. Good.
You're a chicken. But I agree, I agree.
No investing in libertarians. There we go.
Can I just say that the Money Management Act, I think puts a lot of restrictions on it anyways from the state level. So we, the PTF is is very conservative and we're moving to something more, a little bit less conservative. We're still going to be restricted on how we can invest those funds by the Money Management Act, but we're trying to open up a little bit to increase our funds for, for future projects.
Okay.
Typically, the PTF return has been a quarter to one percent. Lately, it's seen, it's been seen up to five, five and a quarter, and that's why we've been seeing some uh revenue increases on our investments. Uh because of sitting in a PTF, but we've, we see that in the forecast is that's gonna change really quickly, really abruptly.
Yeah.
And that was what triggered the finance committee looking at, hey, we need to diversify it. And we looked into the policy and realized, or staff did, and this is quite outdated and wanted to bring it more current, and that's what's brought before the council today is to make that current to give them some guidance as to how they want to go forward.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll look for a motion here.
I'll make the motion to approve the city investment policy amend amendment with the additional amendment that we have language. Uh, the as articulated that the governance be quarterly reports with the admin finance committee and annual report to the city council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, fraud risk assessment. Any discussion on this? We need.
I can handle that if you'd like, or.
Okay.
The finance admin committee also looked at the uh progress um assessment. This is something that we do annually. Uh, we got a score and I'm gonna look to uh Brandon to, uh, sorry, James, not James, Brandon, David, Brett. I'm looking at all the names, and I'm like, okay, Brett's not in front of Brad, is he in front of Brett? Jamie's in. Um, the, we got, we, we got a great score, uh, you know, a perfect score, but we got a great score, and I wanted to see if Brett would speak to that and how we're moving forward.
Yeah, so the, because it's a self-assessment, we looked at what was done last year, not what's being done currently. Um, we scored a three fifty-five out of three ninety-five, which based on their ranking scale i- is considered low. There's either very low, low, um.
Which, which low is good.
Low is good. It's good. You, you don't want to, you want to keep a low score.
Low risk.
With, I should say that. Um, and so based on what happened last year, we, we scored low, which is, which is what we want. There's some room for improvement and that's what we plan on working on this year. Um, some things are, will take more than a year to, to take care of, but some things that we can look at now um to improve that score.
I would just like to acknowledge the staff's effort to uh keep maintain a, a low, low-risk level. Um, that's very commendable.
Okay.
This is just a reported item. I don't think it's requires any action on.
I move to accept the fraud risk assessment.
Second.
We do need it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That wraps things up, other than our new business and council reports. So anyone have any new business? To discuss? Dave, you have any new business?
I do not.
Council reports, uh, starting with Wayne, you want to start with the reporting?
Um, uh, most of the admin finance committee report happened today. We did go over the progress assessment and the investment policy, so I don't need to add anything more there. Thank you for your support on that. Uh, the dust gravel, I called the dust committee, but the gravel committee uh met yesterday, and uh my apologies, I came a little unhinged in our conversations.
I thought you were very good.
Uh, was, was quite articulate with my frustrations with the last quarter. They appreciated the candid feedback was their comment. They don't normally, uh, their, their business, they don't go to that office every day, so they don't know what's going on every day, and so sometimes getting the um colorful feedback uh helps them or take uh acknowledge some things they need to work on. And they recognize that they have some work to do and continue to do, and they'll look at it. Uh. I don't know, Rod, if you want to add anything more to that, but uh.
We gave him a few recommendations on what we'd like to see them do on controlling the water. They are going to uh that lower level where they've been cutting the the pit deeper over on the north uh west side. Uh. They're gonna start putting some uh mud, they call it mud, on top of that, sealing that off. But like there was a fair amount of dust that was coming from there. And that was uh part of their plan that they're trying to do this fall. Get that, and then uh that was about it. We asked that because they're not there every day, but the manager of the pit is there every day, we said it would be good to talk with him and say, you know, he knows which days are blowing harder than others and should see that more water is being applied or or that it is being applied. They say that they they have their schedule uh that they run on that, but on days that are real windy, they need to do a little little better and step that up, and they said they would.
So, one question I had and that someone, one of my neighbors brought it up, if they're not mining or exiting out material currently, shouldn't they be covering up all of their exposed material?
Well, they are, they are still mining and just at a slower pace. When I'd say.
It's.
It's, but they are still.
Race, it's a gray area because they are still mining, so how much of the area is allowed to be left open? And that's the open question. They're not mining as much as they have is opened, and that's part of the problem. But I will say, you know, you know, I don't owe any money to the swear jar, but it got close.
You dang it, but you didn't yell out enough.
I'll run you a tab.
Thanks, Ron.
Jeremy.
Uh, nothing to report today, thank you.
Joel.
Um, parks are going fantastic, uh, they're closing down everything for winter. Um, we had code committee today, uh, we addressed some code, uh, made some changes and uh it should be coming to the next city council. So we're trying to streamline that process, as I mentioned before, and um think we had a good meeting.
I haven't noticed, but we have, have we removed the portable restrooms yet?
Um, we have three of them still left where the um games are still going on. So uh Curtis has asked us to, to keep them up for that amount of time, and then they will be pulled.
Okay. Angie.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we met last night for the events committee during the dust meeting. I can't believe we didn't hear anything exciting. I guess we were having our own good time, huh, Shelly? Um, we were talking about our Halloween trunk or treat, which is next Monday night, beginning at six PM, and so all of the council members are expected to be in attendance with a costume.
With a costume?
Yeah. The city.
When?
Monday night.
I'm a Iron Man.
You're not out of town.
I'm just Iron Man.
So um, October twenty-eighth, six o'clock, so we will have our trunk or treat, and then uh we will have activities in the family activity center as well.
Do we have a guesstimate of how many people we're expecting this year?
Yes, Shelly, why don't you tell them?
Um, last time I checked on Facebook, there were nine hundred people that responded, so don't know how many of those will show up, but that's how many we have.
And how many did we have last year?
It was a lot.
A lot, but not that much.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So it, it should be great. Also, I'm assuming you guys don't want to decorate a trunk, and you're gonna leave that to me. Is that a safe assumption?
I would assume that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll bring a little heater.
I make the motion to nominate Angie, dude.
If, if you bring a electrical cord, I'll bring some of my big guys. I got a giant dragon.
Hey, Blair.
Um, I don't have much to report. The RAB committee, the Hiller Force Restoration Advisory Board will meet Thursday night. Um, they are gonna discuss the indoor air quality, which affects us, the other opable units are outside of our area that they're discussing, but uh usually OU one and OU two do come up either way, but I'll report on that later, and uh the municipal utilities is, or on the public works is meeting tomorrow. We are still meeting tomorrow, correct?
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
Okay. Good, I have nothing to report either, so with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, well, Jeremy can have it.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.